This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Uh, Kira Henninger, I'm a parent of twin boys in fifth grade at Mountain View School. Um, I've been observing the process and I've been communicating via email. So I don't have anything in particular um to say, but just that I really appreciate um the very clear presentation um and the thoughtful questions um that have been asked by those school committee members. Um, and I understand we are under tight budget constraints and that is not just East Hampton, that is very much a local um issue that all districts are experiencing. Um, and despite that, I will continue as a parent and educator to advocate um for figuring out ways to move forward to make sure that our kids are getting um the education that they are entitled to and that they deserve. Um, and then we continue to prioritize our youngest members of our community so that our community continues to thrive. Um, so I just appreciate the thoughtful dialogue and look forward to hearing the process it as it continues.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kira. Uh, seeing no one else at all in our meeting, um, I'm gonna prop this this directions that you can at least see Nick speak while we attempt the owl uh to get working. And so for the public record, we'll see him speaking. Um, but I will now turn the floor over to our Director of Business for a general update if you want to start with that, or you can go into the particular items, however you would like to to do it.
I think I'll just go into the cost center sheet first and then kind of overview that I did last time after the fact. Um, not really much has changed between two weeks ago and now. Um, the number decreased a little bit. Um, but yeah, I can explain why at the end of the meeting. If you like, I can jump into this district one. That's the one you have as staples because there's so many accounts. Put it on one page if you did a microscope. So as you, you know, can, you know, kind of gather, you know, we went through the two cost centers of the high school in Mountain View two weeks ago. Um, and their, you know, location increases over last year, I should say over this year. Um, weren't that much. Um, you know, because from year to year, you know, not a ton tends to change in buildings. I mean, obviously when Mountain View opens and with the consolidation, there was a lot there. Uh, and then just trying to figure out, you know, from year to year, what it costs to operate that place, you know, but we're getting to a better place now or, you know, kind of able to pinpoint it better. Your largest increases are going to be within the district uh cost center and the federalized cost center. Those are the drivers of, you know, your huge increase. So what I'll do is I'll kind of go like I did last time. I'll just kind of go through the um major increases and or decreases. Um, and kind of, you know, provide explanations for those, if that's okay?
Mm hmm.
Yeah. All right. So starting with the top one, the school committee stipends, it looks like it's increasing a lot presented wise because that's what the, you know, the city council voted to increase the stipends for the school committee members. That took effect on January 2nd of this year. So for FY24, you're only doing half the year at the increased, half the fiscal year at the increased stipend. The other half of the fiscal year were at the other rates. Um, so.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you say that one more time?
All right, the, the school committee stipends increased as of January 2nd, 2024.
Right.
So in fiscal year 24.
Oh, wait, okay.
Only half that year. Only half that year is going to be at the increased.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So next year, you're like, that'll be zero percent increase. Cause the whole fiscal year will be the, the, you know, the new rate, if that makes sense.
Can you state for the public, Nick, what it, what the stipend per member used to be for a term and what it now is, just so that's clear?
It used to be 2,000 per term for um five of the members. And I think 20 was 2150 for the chair. Um, now it's.
For a term or a year?
A year, sorry, not a term, for a year. Um, now it's 4,000 a year, uh, and then the chair gets 4,250.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
First I'm hearing that the chair gets more money for the rent.
Yeah. $250 stipend, you can buy some eggs and a couple.
This is how they know it's not smacking. Why is that one giving up this one? Hold on, everybody, sorry. Hear something? Nope, that's not it. Hello?
Hello?
Nope. Yes, she is.
All right. So the chair does get an additional $250 a year for their floor.
Great.
Don't uh spend it all in one place.
No, yeah.
Um, all right, moving on, the second one there, the second line that is increasing quite a bit is school committee other expenses. And that's what a superintendent search would be funded through. Um, so, you know, I budgeted about 12 or 13,000 dollars for that. Um, that tends to be the, you know, kind of the going rate. If you go with one of the usual vendors around here, such as MASC, NASDAQ, there's a couple others. Um, a nationwide search could cost up to, you know, 75, 80,000 dollars. I don't know that there'd be an appetite for that, but, you know, certainly wasn't gonna throw all that in there.
Um, what else, what else falls into that category, Nick? If we're, I'm looking at that where we have 36, 550. So what else is typically spent out of that?
MASC membership. Um, you know, things like that. If someone attends the MASC, MASs joint conference. Um.
That training that we're doing March.
Yeah, things like that uh would fall under there.
Okay.
Um. Usually we, you know, we budget, you know, around 20 or a little more for that.
But because of the superintendent search, we've added some money. Okay.
Um, you know, also the, you have the cost for the legal ad, you know, when we do the budget hearing.
Right.
Your uh wonderful name placards for the days upstairs, um, those were funded through there. Um, yeah, so that any, you know, anything that the school committee may spend money on, other than the stipends, would be funded out of there. Uh, also the audit, sorry for my end of the year report, I knew I was forgetting something. Uh, that's $4,000 a year. So that, that's a school committee expense because it's a DESI mandate that it goes audit. All right, moving on to other cost centers that have, or sorry, the counts that have changes. Um. Project coordinator professional salaries, you see a 48.06% increase. Um, that would be a salary that is currently in the ESER grants that we would like to, um, you know, to, to move to the general fund and maintain that position of the family engagement coordinator. Um, so that explains that increase. Uh, moving down a little bit, I don't see anything drastic. Um. Until we get to the 84.96% increase tech coordinator slash chief. That, that, that would be your, I'm sorry, technology assistant salary. That would be the 1.4 FTE IT staff that are currently in the ESER grant. That would be their salaries moving to the general fund as we um hope to keep those two uh positions. I, I mean, they're, you know, our IT department has only four staffs.
Small as it is, we can't.
And yeah, I, their day to day ticketing alone in terms of like, you know, support ticket requests that come in and, and, you know, they're swamped. I, I don't see them having an easy time if, if they had fewer staff than they currently do. Um. Next, we move on to, you'll see a 140.76% increase for uh admin technology contractors. I mean, the actual increase isn't that much. It, it's just the percent looks high because there's not a lot budgeted in there usually. And that's to cover a unit trends backup system that we had to purchase this year. So all of our, our files and everything are, are maintained in a cloud. Um, just in case, you know, anything were to ever happen. Um, ours was basically non-existent prior to this year. So we um, we invested in that, but there is a recurring yearly charge.
Mm hmm.
Um, that account, uh, and the recurring yearly charge is about $9,000. It's not cheap. Um, but it's certainly worth it if you were to have some sort of catastrophic IT failure and all of a sudden you lose all your stuff, that would be, I mean, especially in the digital age in which we live, um, that could be detrimental. So it, it, it's costly, but worth it nonetheless. Um, that account also funds the consultant that we pay for to do E-rate um stuff. I don't know how familiar you are with E-rate funding.
Not at all.
Not at all? Zero? Oh, okay. Well, um, I think it, it was the inception of it, I think it was back in like the late 90s. It's a Federal Communications Commission program that provides funding for school districts and libraries for um basically internet connections, internet service, um, internal connections, maintenance of things like switches and network pieces and things. Um, basically what it is, is every school district in the country can apply for funding. A lot don't, and we did not prior to this year. Um, but I, you know, I, I knew in my prior district, we, our, our IT director there had used, you know, he, he did a lot with it. So something I wanted to explore. Um, in my early exploration of it, it became blatantly obvious that hiring a consultant is necessary because there are a lot of rules and regulations. And if you get audited and mess something up, you end up having to pay it back. Um, cause it is a, a federal program. Um, so I got some names of consultants and did a little research and we did hire one this year, um, who does all the forms. Everything. They keep all your records for you. Um, they deal with audits if you, you know, happen to get one, whatever. Um, the benefit we get is um, the, the funding you can get is um, it's based on your um low income percentage of students, really free and reduced percentage. Um, free and reduced lunch percentage, but we're, we're at a 60% discount rate for um, for what we have here. So our internet access service, it comes at 60%, you know, of its full cost or 40% of its full cost. Um, and that's part of what they call your category one budget, which really it's, there, there's no actual budget for it. Like, you don't get a set amount of money you can spend. It's just, this is what internet costs. We pay 40% of it. Federal government pays the other 60%. Um, I never even see that bill. It just comes off of, you know, the cost. Category two budget is when you want to do projects and every uh district gets a, a budget based on what their uh low income percentage of students is. And it's a five-year cycle budget. Um, as, uh, up until this year, we hadn't touched it. Um, so going into next year is the fourth year of the cycle. So after next year, it'll be one more year. So basically any projects we want to do that are E-rate eligible, which it's not everything, like I can't buy security cameras with it. I can't buy phones with it. I can't buy computers with it. It's, it's very specific things that are eligible, but we get that out of 60% discount.
Can I ask a question? Do we think it's possible that maybe we could use that funding? This is a little off topic, but I want to put it in the ether now. Uh, to get some AV setup in one or both of the school buildings? So we could have meetings similar to like the way we're wired here. That's always been.
Great idea.
Um, maybe we can ask our consultant if that could qualify?
I don't think AV connections are eligible per se. Um, I could review the list again, you know, they do publish a list every year. Um, you know, if it is eligible, I, I think in going in the, in the future, that's something we could certainly look into for next year, however, that the deadline to submit a form is, I think, tomorrow or Wednesday. So to, yeah, because like basically when you, you submit what's called a Form 470, and that goes out to all kind of companies that they want to bid on it. And that's where you describe your project.
Gotcha.
It's gotta be active for 28 days before you can choose a vendor and, and whatever, which actually are the one we put out um Fri- last Friday was the, the deadline. So I can now review stuff and, you know, choose the vendors. Um, however, the deadline for filing your actual funding request with the government is March, uh, I think 27th. So in order for something to be out there for 28 days prior to that date, we'd have to get it out.
But it's something that we could do the following year?
I, I can.
If it were to qualify.
Yeah, yeah.
And then AV is the wrong term. Maybe I should be talking about we want to be able to record and broadcast. Ideally from a room in each school building, one in Mountain View and one in the high school.
The, definitely the broadcasting and recording equipment wouldn't be eligible, but the, some of the connections, the wiring and that kind of.
Anything we can get to cut that cost, that might be great. Okay.
I'd have to look. And, and they do change their eligible services list every year. Uh, right, right now, there's a huge push in the E-rate world to have cybersecurity stuff covered.
Yeah.
Um, it's currently not. So we'll see where that goes. I think that would be a good use of, of funding too. Because like, you know, you're one cyber attack away from problems.
Right.
Um, you know, so that, that could be coming down the pipeline too. So in any event, are you rate, every E-rate consultant uh is paid for with that account?
And that's, sorry, you told me what line that is again?
Uh, it's the one with the 140.7% increase, like a third is the way down.
Admin technology. And so that one, we haven't applied and gotten that discount in the past, but now we, so we have the consultants, now we have this discount. So I'm guessing it turns out beneficial in the end.
It will be, yeah. I mean, I mean, we've had discounted internet in the past.
Yeah.
For sure. But in terms of doing projects, um, we, we haven't taken advantage of that. And, and honestly, it was probably a bandwidth issue. It's hard. And you really need to know your rules and regulations. Um, I was able to do what I was able to do for this year that we're currently in, but I expanding it, a consultant is necessary. I don't have the bandwidth to make sure I do it all correctly.
Yeah, I think that's great.
There's no way.
That's how we move forward and, and develop new stuff by getting the best, you know, people who do this and thinking about. That's great.
The consultant is very reasonably priced. She's only $2,500 for the year flat fee and 10% um of funding that you get.
Yeah, that's great. I'm, I'm excited about the idea of having a longer term, even five-year cycle plan for stuff we could be doing. That's great.
Yeah. And, and when we were able to do some projects that would need to be done anyway with discounted funding, we free up money to replace Chromebooks and to do other types of uh IT stuff that's not E-rate eligible. So um, I'm happy to take advantage of that. Um, the next account, um, you know, it looks like it's a huge increase, 100%. But it's just doubling what's there. It's for IT supplies, basically hardware. Um, you know, there, there's things that are going to go over the next few years. I'm sure that we're trying to plan for. I did include a couple IT things in a, the capital plan that the, the city wants me to submit. Um, just because you can't do it all in one year. You, you gotta get it out on paper. You gotta make a part of your plan over time. Um, we did buy a couple battery backups this year after an internet um failure that we had. Yeah. A while, a couple, I think it was right before.
Yeah.
The holiday break there when um we had the torrential rains there. Um, our internet was down for like a day and a half.
I remember.
There, there was stuff, there was consequences that went with it. And yeah, the phones were down. That's, you know, except at the high school because they're not, they're not internet phones. They're still land.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Put that in, or you have to.
Um, so we did buy battery backups and our IT director believes that that issue would have been avoided had our battery backups been functional at the time. But, you know, there's bits and pieces of things that you need to replace over time. So they don't, you know, that doesn't happen again. Um, so we did have a meeting after that happened to, we had a, how can we prevent this from happening again meeting? Um, as you should do when things like that occur. Um, all right, moving on, um, I don't really see anything drastic. I did increase the clerical substitutes account a little bit. I, it's overspent this year. Um, you know, when, when admin assistants are out, um, you know, they can't always get a sub, but there is one or two, or are one or two people that are pretty consistent that taking the sub jobs.
Mm hmm.
Um, some of it was the fact that we had an admin assistant at Mountain View resign back in December. And somebody did not take her place until, I think, beginning of probably February 1st-ish. So that position was vacant for like a month and a half. And, you know, they had a sub in there a lot. Uh, which they need. I mean, the elementary office, you can understand what that might look like. Uh, it's chaotic. Phone rings a lot, a lot of people buzzing in at the door, students coming in, asking for things. The admin assistants are go-to people for quite a few folks in the building. So um, I did increase that a bit just because honestly, the last two years it was overspent. And I'm like, you know, maybe we're not budgeting enough.
Yeah, and that's just the 700, right?
Um, the increase is 500.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So I mean, it's not a huge dollar increase. It just, it's a percentage difference. Um, all right, moving on down, you'll see a negative 100% increase for uh contracted services elementary after-school program. That doesn't exist anymore. That was a custodial charge that was um in effect when there was after-school programs in the three elementary buildings.
Yeah.
Um, I know there's a couple of different after-school programming options. I know Champion is kind of the, you know, the main one, but I think there was another one too. And due to the hours or something that it was working, there was always a $4,000 custodial charge for the year. But now that the buildings are consolidated, that, that doesn't need to be there anymore.
Probably marcius program.
Yep. So I, I just, I took that out because we, we, the bill doesn't exist anymore. Um, we didn't know that this year, so that money was budgeted for this year. But, you know, it will certainly be spent somewhere else.
Mm hmm.
Um, all right, moving on to other things, um, teaching supplies, we um, you'll see that goes up quite a bit. It was because um, that amount, the $10,000 was moved to grants for this year's budget. But that needs to go back because that buys paper for the district, which, you know, what we do our best, obviously, at, 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 you know, saving paper. Uh, you know, we, we, I think I mentioned last meeting, the paper cut print release software that we, we've got now. So, you know, I'm thinking that the savings will, you know. But that being said, paper's still gonna be used. Um, you know, especially at central office. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, IEPs will get printed and mailed if the family requests that, you know, there's just a lot. Um, you know, in the business office, as much of a digital copy person as I am, you need to have hard copies of a lot of things in file and cabinets for audits and stuff. It's, it's smart to do that. Um. All right, moving on down, we're going to increase our translation slash interpretation line. Um, that was a new account this year that Julianne Love and our curriculum uh director had asked if we could do that. I, I think prior um translating documents and, you know, interpretation and needed which kind of is a mishmash of accounts. Um, but uh Julianne had asked if we could get a dedicated funding source for it. It makes sense. A whole lot of sense. I mean, we do have, you know, plenty of families who, you know, English is not their, their first language and they have rights to translation.
I think the newsletters, I think everything that's going out to now has that translation attached, which is newer.
It's great. Right.
Um, so um, we're finding that we didn't budget enough for it this year.
Would the increase mean more languages as well?
That's another piece. I mean, we do have some families that speak languages that we haven't necessarily seen in the district before. I believe there's a Burmese family that came this year. Arabic, uh, yeah, we just uh had a new family start today, um, from Syria.
Imagine possibly Ukraine, Russia.
I, I don't think we've seen a lot of that yet.
Springfield.
Westfield, Agal on Springfield, yeah. They, you know, families from, from Eastern Europe have settled or their relatives have settled. And I know that from being a former principal in Agal, I had over 50 Russian and Ukrainian students at my school.
Yeah.
Um, they've gotten a huge influx. I just know from speaking with a former colleague. So um, we haven't seen that so much here, but as I said, Burmese, Chinese, Arabic. So we're, you know, we are starting to see some language.
So that would fit into that would.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because, you know, just even forms, I mean, like the free and reduced lunch form, I can get translated copies of that from the government um for free. But, you know, the, the letters that go out to families, those, as huge as you can. Yeah, so um, you know, we, we do wish to increase that to make sure our families need some rest. Um. Moving on down a little further, you'll see the school nurses salary line goes up because one of our nurses is currently funded with the ESER uh grant. And uh, we can't survive without that position due to just legal requirements.
Yeah, right.
Nursing schools, so.
They keep themselves pretty busy with the, with my children.
Certainly busy. Every time I walk by that office, I find you, there's a lot of customers though. Um, yeah, so that's what that is. Uh. The next line, the health substitutes, it's not really showing up much, but um, you know, if we.
Yeah.
You know, luckily, we haven't used that a lot in the last couple of years due to the number of nurses we have. But, you know, sometimes pool nurse positions can become vacant and they can be harder to fill.
Yes.
Um, if somebody wants to move on to something else. And last year it was, one was vacant for a bit.
Wow.
Um, and we were considering contracting with an agency, which that's not cheap uh to do. Luckily, we did um, we did sign someone relatively quickly to fill the position. End up having to, but, you know, you want a little bit there in case you do. Um. Next, uh, I don't see anything really dramatic on the front page.
Can you just touch on the food service contract?
Oh, yeah, that's a, that does not touch the general fund at all. Um, which is why you see like a 0% increase there in the entire amounts in the other funding column. Um, that's what I estimate the cost will be next year based on what it was this year. Um, you know, how we're, we're, we're doing so far, kind of sales. Um, you know, projecting the increased cost of labor based on the um, the increase in wages at the hourly food service workers, COTC and um, back in December, so, or November. So I, I estimate that.
That is, that is the cost to feed all the kids year-round, correct? And then, so that doesn't factor it? Like, right now, that's paid for reimbursed or paid for somehow through the state government?
But yeah, there's reimbursement.
Materials and staff or just material?
That'll be, that's food and staff. What that, what's not in there is if equipment breaks down.
Mm hmm.
Um, that, you know, I, I mean, I think I, I budgeted a little bit um for equipment maintenance. There'll actually, there'll be a page.
Newer though.
We've had a couple steamers go down. It should do it. Um, it should be, but Popco's been out a couple of times. Um, there, there will be a page in the budget. Let's get breaks that down where I got that number from. Um, so you'll kind of see where that is.
We don't have any sense from the state government that they're gonna reverse that. We have, do we know what they're doing next year? It seems like they brought their, they keep supporting it.
They include um the universal free meals in their House Two budget that she submitted. Um, so, you know, and, and it is at this point law.
Yeah.
That it's gotta be funded. Um, so right now it's a budgets in the House Committee. Uh, not exactly sure when their version of the budgets do out, but I can't see them touching that. I mean, it would require changing the law and it's certainly unpopular.
It's good. So for the foreseeable future, barring any other unforeseen stuff, I'll continue, yeah.
Yes, I, I mean, I, I think there'll be a little bit of sweating each year, just, you know, I mean, especially the state revenue they're down. Um, you know, because the, the reimbursements districts were higher than they previously were because the meals are free, more kids are.
If it does go that way, were we cut at least breaking even on food service before we went free? No, we were losing money.
There was, there was quite a bit of debt in this district prior to COVID. Um, when meals started being free. I, I mean, if they did take it away, we'd be okay for a couple of years because of what we've built up. And, you know, we have some money we can invest into the program. Um, but, you know, say three, four years out, we'd be in the same situation.
Slow digging hole. All right.
Yeah. Um, but, you know, I'm also trying to spend down that account to what I can because like you're not supposed to carry a three-month cash flow in there.
Right.
Um, but we have more than a three-month. I, I have still most districts in the state at this point, honestly. It, it's, it, you know, we're, we've actually gotten memos from the state about things you can spend that money on because they're trying to get people to spend.
Yeah.
Um, and as I said, when equipment breaks, it's funded out of there. We bought a new point-of-sale system last year. We bought iPads. We bought a color printer for the department recently, a couple carts. So we are, um, you know, and I actually met with our, um, the food service director's boss, like the general manager of, of Chartwell's for this region last, he popped in my office last week. he popped in my office last week. Um, and you know, we did, I did ask him, you know, is there anything? And you know, he, he did mention something about possibly the tables at the high school, like maybe it's time to replace them. So, um, you know, things like that, we can look into doing with that, you know, with what we have. So, um, as I said, that the, the, there would be a page in my budget book that kind of shows you where I got that figure from. Um, but I won't know for absolute certain until we sign the contract for next year either. Like they will give me renewal paperwork in probably April. Is usually when they do that. Um, it's not due until June, but we like to get it done early because the state's got a lot of them in the process. The earlier you get them, the better. Um, but I, I don't anticipate it being higher than that. Um, and if it is, as I, we, we've got money in that account. I'm not terribly worried about it. If it's higher, it won't be that much higher. The, the amount of kids that are eating and reimbursements that are coming in subsequently will, uh, will cover it. So.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, moving on to the second, uh, page of the district line. Um, you'll see, oh, cause the, the second, uh, row down there, the, uh, because, uh, contracted services, custodial, other expenditures. Um, that is, um, just, you know, people we have to hire to come in every now and then, and you know, essentially fix things, you know, things like that. I did increase that a bit, um, because our director, if anything, it's next to him. Um, I kept custodial overtime, uh, flat, which this year we're getting a little close. I didn't spend it all last year, but that Sunday snowstorm we had a couple of months ago, that cost about $3,000. Cause it was all double time. It was all Sunday. It was, yeah. That was not a cheap storm to clean up.
Gotcha. Yeah. The things you don't think about in those snow decisions. Yeah.
But in order to get schools open Monday.
Exactly.
I'm having people there on Sunday.
Um, for the most part, those are pretty small figures though, even though the percentage is like, yeah.
Um, I did decrease heating.
Yeah.
Because I, I were not terrible right now. It's what I budgeted this year.
Are we propane? What are we using?
Natural gas.
Oh, all right.
But you know, we're, we're looking okay there this year for what I budgeted. So I, I'm like, now I think I can decrease that a bit. I mean.
It was really mild this winter.
Yeah, well, that too. Although February, February was cold.
Yeah.
Not compare like.
Yeah, that's a significant savings. That's good.
Yeah.
And I think that's also that the buildings are efficient.
Yeah, they do hold heat better.
Yeah. And we have a huge glass that I mean, that brings heat in and.
We were using the same buildings last year, so we, we saw a decrease even from last year.
You're right. Yeah. It's good. That's good.
Yeah, I, I'm not terribly worried about that. Of course it's going to get spent on electricity.
Right. We're probably on the positive, Nick.
Yeah. Still. The next line, um, you know, I, I, the electric rates continue to go up, uh, the supply, you know, the, the city does lock in supply rates. Um, for a period of time, and those are going to go up to the renegotiating that right now. Um, you'll see that, that, uh, the account has decreased. Um, and that's because I think we are going to need to cover some of that with school choice.
Is this utility system, other expenditures? Is that's electricity?
Yeah, that's all electricity. Um, so I, I am proposing that we use some school choice money to cover.
So it's not that we're using less. It's that we're going to pull that from somewhere else. That's the 76, 412. Yes, 150. Yep.
Yeah. I mean, I think we're going to spend 76,000 more dollars this year.
Yep.
Uh, or sorry, next year than we did this year. That account's going to be in deficit this year.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's just the, the rates.
It was nuts this year. Yeah. Even though it was mild, mild.
Yeah.
Well, then the summer kills you too.
Exactly.
Conditioning is running.
Exactly. Yeah.
Um, you know, it, the summer gets you for sure. Um, I mean, I, you know, uh, I, e- every year you, you obviously can use some school choice money to offset your budget. You want to use as little as, as possible, of course, because you need to save money for emergencies and things like that. But I, you know, we're just not in a position right now where, you know, we've got to use school choice.
Yeah. It just means it's something for us to watch for next year and might come back all 76 plus thousand. Okay.
I even want to know what that's going to look like. Um, all right, the next account is, um, utilities.
Grant for solar.
Um, next account is utilities, uh, telephone service. Um, that's going up just because we've replaced the phones at central office and the, you know, monthly service fee.
Not much you can do about needing telephones. That's.
No, I honestly, not enough was budgeted this year for that. Because, and, and the reason why I can tell you, we used to have one account for electricity and phone. Um, they were both paid out of the same account. The reason why they were both paid out of the same account, um, is because, uh, the way, uh, when you did it, that's the end of the year report, you report them in the same place. Both in trash removal too, believe it or not, uh, although the city took that bill for us. So, um, I don't have to pay for that, but the, um, so it was kind of hard to tell, like, you, you know, it's like, okay, how much of this is phone? How much of this, you know, without doing kind of a deeper dive? Um, so I did a deeper dive last year and you know, I did another deeper dive this year and said, okay, well, we need to have this much more to cover. Now it covers your landlines and covers the cell phones for the folks in the district to have them. Um, also long distance, which we don't spend a ton on, but it's there. Um, so that, that is what I estimate we need for next year. I think that's a way better figure than what we had this year.
Good.
Um, going down, I mean, there's nothing.
Yeah.
Huge. I do see a 59.96% increase in, uh, technology maintenance systems. Um, the dollar amount's not a lot. The dollar amount's only $2,700. Um, but that's again, maintaining systems we have, so they remain functional. Um, that helps with what we call basic maintenance, which is something that is E-rate funding eligible. So, um, you know, one of the things that, you know, we will receive a 60% discount for basic maintenance of our firewall and our switches and our access points. Um, you know, I don't know what vendor will do that for us because you got to bid it every year. Um, but in any event, that, that would be covered with that account. Um, moving on down, it gets contract lane changes. You'll see an increase there and that's.
Okay. So this is just steps?
That's step raises and you know, changes in individually contracted folks' salaries. Um, you know, that, that's basically what's in there.
Is that about how much it is a year? We've done towards that? No, this happens to be a year with a big possible.
Some of it's tied to the fact that we, we won't have a, you know, we're not going to set up a contract. Normally, you know, when you have, when you're in the middle of a contract and there's a year or two left, um, you know what folks' step raises are going to be.
Yeah.
Um, based on where they are on the scale and you already have the increases. So you just put them in their individual accounts.
Yep.
Because that like they're going to get that raised. Um, but you know, the unknown this year creates, you know, the need to put all of that in one account rather than everybody's. Um, so that's why that's, that's, normally you would just see individual contracted salary raises there. Um. All right, next is you'll see an increase in vote tuition for, um, that's, uh, uh, that's Smith, the first one.
The first one, Smith, the bottom one, C tech?
Yeah, mass public dot vote dot tuition to mass schools. That is, uh, Smith. And you know, that number is based entirely on the, um, kids that are, are students that are currently there, moving up a grade level and, um, people that have applied based on information I've got for the eighth grade school account for, um, to go there for, um, you know, ninth grade. Um, the graduating class from Smith this year, uh, is only five. So we're not like, there, there's not a lot of students that are, you know, it's not like we're graduating 10 and then getting 10 ninth graders. It's for graduating five seniors and, you know, we have about 12 or 13 ninth grade applications. So.
Five at Smith?
Currently, yes. Um, so you know, that, that, that price is going up. Um, however, conversely, I guess, I would say fewer ninth grade applications were for C tech. So I, I'm going to decrease that a little bit. And also we did have some students leave their mid-year this year. Like after the first semester, I did have a few return to the high school.
You try it and it's just not.
Yeah, I, it's, you know, I suppose everyone's got their reasons. So, um, so I did decrease that a bit based on current data that I have. Um, next is, um, transportation, uh, contract. That's our regular day bus. You'll see 437,145 dollars budgeted for it. Uh, out of the general fund and an additional 335 budgeted out of other funding sources. That would be 300,000 from school choice and 35,000 from revenue we get from, uh, bus passes. Um, and that, you know, but that, that, that's a known increase every year.
Yeah.
Um, I did also include money in there to renew the late bus, um, if the committee has an appetite for that.
Yeah.
Um, that was an addition this year. It was not budgeted for, but.
The cost?
Um, it's not much. It's right now, it's only like, what, $55 per bus per day? And they told us if we continue it going into next year, it'll just be the 3% increase that the regular day buses get. So, um, that number there is based on the late bus for the same amount of time we have it this year for the same amount of buses with a 3% increase.
Two days a week?
Two days a week.
Two days a week.
And we, are we filling that late bus or do we need to do additional publicity so that people are aware that it's a very great question?
I don't believe they're filling it. I, the kids in the high school, it's all mountain.
Okay. So two days a week. Are they fixed days?
Yes.
It's Wednesday, Thursday.
Yep. Just, I just think it'd be useful if we could send out a reminder to families. Who are spending the money and there's people who aren't even, I didn't know about it till last week. No joke.
And there's other things stacked on Wednesday, Thursday for kids to do after school.
That's why they, they picked those two days.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Great. And if it's not full, can we?
Well, it depends upon this season, what they're offering in schools. Yeah.
Right. I think let's just make sure we have the word out.
Right. Our, yeah. Well, they sent, um, each school sent home a notice at the beginning of the year saying that we were going to get it.
Beginning of the, right. Beginning of the year, it's like, like.
Yeah.
Jill and, but like I get a newsletter from Mountain View, Annie Sampson High School every like couple of times a week. So if they could just shoot one of those out. Yeah.
Maybe some of the options of what kids can do. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I'd love to see it expanded. Yeah. I'd love to see it expanded if, you know, if there's more clubs, if we can go that route of.
And if there is a bigger interest, then maybe it's like for $50 a year, you're buying a pass for a late bus, but we have to gauge the interest and the engagement.
Yes. Okay. I think I, I would expect that there would be, um, interest and like an okay feeling with paying a little extra to have like access to a late bus as an option for your kid. I would guess.
I would guess too. Okay. Great.
After school is such an enormous issue and, uh, in particular is now, I just found out that the, the two young, um, after school programs in town are shutting down for next year.
What they are?
Yeah. Because they can, yeah.
Or sorry, Young World and.
Young World and Roots, which was Our Lady. They, so now, yeah. So that's another thing we should.
They're not going to be open next?
They're not for, not for after school.
Oh, just for before school?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
No, no, not for a school aged kid.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
And when kids do stay after, are there stipends for staff that run programs? Was it just outside?
There are some co-curricular.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's a larger conversation, but.
Yeah.
It might wait, but okay. Yeah. I think it's a busing issue.
Well, that'll be an.
We'll have to work sessions to spread.
Yeah. Okay.
Add to the queue list, Laura.
Yeah, I did.
All right, moving on, um, the next line is just vocational transportation. It's the same.
Always goes up.
Now, the Smiths, C tech has their buses and I know how they did. One of the kids that go to Smith, how, how do they get a bus? What, how is that working with transportation?
They get a round trip that they're, yeah, just like our students that go to Mountain View. Our kids that go to Smith.
Up on the regular bus.
They get picked up and brought home on the regular bus.
So they get back to school and then from school is a bus. Okay.
Yeah, because Smith is a full day program.
Gotcha. So like if they're within the radius.
Picking them up at East Hampton High School to bring them to Smith?
That's the bus.
Oh, they, they get picked up from their.
Yeah, they don't go there. Only C tech.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay.
I see.
So that, that account includes, uh, C tech and Smith.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay.
Um, next is, um, homeless transportation. I, you know, I decreased it slightly based on current numbers, but I mean, that, that's a moving target.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, you know, because students that are homeless have the right to remain in their home, their, the district that they're in, in school in. Um, what happens generally is you end up splitting the costs with the district that they're now living in. They say 50, 50.
Yeah. And then Vanpool is going to be under the sped, um, the special education path center?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, the last one here is foster care transportation. That's going up dramatically because when we budgeted for this year, there was very, very few and now there's not.
Yeah.
Um, so you, you kind of, I, I believe one student who's currently in foster care is graduating, but, um, that, you know, it still leaves behind a, a few and it's, it's costly. Um, you know.
Is there any state reimbursement for that?
Yeah, but it goes to the city.
I see. So.
I filed it last week and the last year.
So what is this? This means that foster children who may not otherwise qualify for transportation?
Well, they have the right to stay in the district that they were.
Oh, I see. Okay. So it isn't that we're, it's because we're.
Plan is playing.
Yeah. Yeah. It's basically, you know, a father, say a student's not in foster care attending East Hampton schools. And then all of a sudden something happens and they are in foster care in a different city.
Foster family, let's say happens to be in Agawam or something, they are entitled to, I see. Thank you.
They can choose to have a child attend schools in their new.
Sure, but maybe they don't want another.
Right.
Yeah. Cause I mean, emotionally a lot of.
No, thousand percent. I just didn't understand.
Yeah, makes sense.
Where we were ran from, we're, yeah. Okay.
And we pay it and then the state pays the city.
They, they reimburse that at a, at a rate that is, you know, appropriated by the state legislature. Um, and can vary from year to year, but that, that revenue goes to the city. Um, there are some municipalities where every year their city council votes to give that money to the school department as a supplemental appropriation to their budget.
So we just build in some percent we ask for.
Yeah. And that's not been broached here. Um, so that revenue will go to the city. Now, when it comes in. And, and then what I filed last week is for last year's costs.
Right.
But we, but the, the city won't get it till next year. So you're, you're in fiscal year.
Which is why we just, that's probably why we just build into the percent. Yeah.
Same thing with homeless transportation reimbursement and Medicaid reimbursement too. Um, so all of that, you throw it in a blender, um, and you know, you're looking at a 23.86% increase in district wise costs, which is much higher than.
It's, it's hard to get around that when one of the items you're averaging in there is a 2,271% increase that you, we have absolutely no control over.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, yeah.
And a 26, 27% increase of something else that happened.
We're already pulling 1.3 million.
Yeah.
A lot of these things are fixed costs.
It's just, yeah, it's just the way it is.
School choice.
And I know why we have to do the percentages, but it just feels like we get dinged over and over for percentages when that's not, I think we can change. Thank you.
Move on to special ed?
Yes, please do.
All right. So there's fewer accounts on here. So it's a little bigger. So you can probably tell us. But you know, I'll go through the major increases here. Um, like I have, uh, first one is contracted services. I mean, it's not a huge dollar amount increase. It's only 3,110 dollars, but, um, that, uh, covers your, um, you know, various agencies that our special ed department has to contract with in order to function, um, paper shreddings in there too, although it's a very minimal cost. Um, other expenses for the special ed director, um, there, the increasing 32%, that's where your, um, power school special ed program, um, comes out of there. That, you know, was definitely not funded enough this year. And it's just, you know, o- other things that, that pop up throughout the year. Um. Next, you'll see a large increase in, um, special ed teachers. Uh, that's, oh, summer, um, summer special ed teachers. That's basically, we didn't budget enough this year for it. Um, it is sometimes hard to budget for that because the folks that work in the program, they get paid their per diem rate to do it. So if I'm a first year teacher, that's making a lot less than a 23rd year teacher. You know what I mean? I'm getting paid my per diem rate, but like we have no way when the budget passes of knowing if like 10 people that have been here for two years are going to apply for those summer jobs or if people at the top of the base, you know, we don't.
Yeah.
Not every kid who qualifies gets sent to the summer program either. We didn't send my kid. It just, it depends on the family situation, what other.
Okay. So we. Okay, so we also don't know how many kids will qualify and then decide to go.
Right. You know how many will qualify, but you don't necessarily know how many will.
Okay, right.
That's another thing. You don't know how many staff.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense.
So I I basically budgeted for next year what we spent this year. Um, same thing with um. Uh, elementary too. Yeah, yeah. First one was the middle school cap. The second one was elementary. Um, so. You know, those are underfunded this year. The paras were overfunded. So I, you'll see when we get to that account, that that's increased.
Yeah.
Um, which. Uh, let's see, tutors went down a bit.
Is this occupational uh physical therapist moving over from S R?
No, that was the Coda that we added.
Oh, that's right.
Midway through this year, the Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant. Uh, that was not something that was budgeted for, but. Looking at the caseloads, um, that position was added this year. So if we'd like to keep that, that's gonna have to increase. Um.
I think that's important.
Um, moving down a bit, you'll see a sixty two percent drop in uh para educator summer, and that's just because that was over budgeted. So somebody had really just moved to the teacher line.
Yes.
Um, you cover. Um, and then you go down further, uh, you'll see an increase in other instructional services for the high school. Um, what that generally funds is is, you know, students who um are between eighteen to twenty two and they're, you know. They're still getting services from us. Um, some will go to Riverside, some will go to, you know, other places around here. But that's generally what that account funds. Um, we do anticipate another student uh going to Riverside next year. So that's why that's increasing. Uh, moving on to, here's the big increases to tuitions. Um, you'll see a large increase in non-public. Um. That's your private special ed day schools and residential. Um, this year, there's definitely not enough money in there. Um, as you can see in the approved budget column and the actual expended column, you're like, whoa.
Yeah.
Um.
It could be one placement mid-year.
Well, it's also because I haven't moved any of that expense to circuit breaker yet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, because we're just kind of waiting for all the revenue to be there.
That's the nature of that.
And we're also waiting to see what we're gonna get in relief for this year too, because we don't know that yet.
That's coming up soon, correct?
Yeah, the special ed director is working on the claim form. I believe it's due March eighth.
Okay.
Um, you know, once she submits that, I could look at it and guesstimate.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. What we're gonna get, but until the state actually approves the thing in April or early May, we're not actually gonna know. Um, but, you know, based on what we have for students this year, you know, a couple graduate, but. You know, we believe that we're going to need over a million dollars for that next year. But I'm also applying or proposing to apply nine hundred forty two thousand from other funding to that. That's how much the tuitions are.
Hmm.
Um, and that's circuit breaker and uh two forty grants is what those other funding sources would be. And that's just based on the students we have now as well as um one that they're awaiting a placement for that is currently at Mountain View. Um, again, fixed costs that we don't have any control over. We do our absolute best to provide programming to keep kids in. Uh, their least restrictive environment in the district, but some students' least restrictive environment is a placement in a special school.
We're gonna talk about least restrictive environment again in a second. Are we done with this line?
Yeah, uh, we're now gonna go down to collaborative tuition. We have someone graduating and nobody else that we know going, so.
Okay.
Um, that line decreases.
Okay.
Uh, moving on to.
Vanpool.
Yep.
So three quarters of a million dollars to Vanpool, which is almost twice our regular, our annual regular day bus.
A lot, seventy thousand for out of circuit breaker. So about eight hundred.
So just the process, I know a lot of it just anecdotally, I know some special ed families. Whose kids qualified for Vanpool, they use Vanpool, they're not married to Vanpool, they don't love it, they don't feel they necessarily need it. What is our process? For saying, you're entitled to this, we can certainly offer it to you if you're interested, but you are not required to, you also have the option. For the regular bus. Again, this conversation about least restrictive environment, most inclusive environment, like how do, is that a, that's another big part of the transportation.
Conversations happen at I E P meetings, um, which I'm, you know, I'm never privy.
Not once was it ever brought up in an I E P meeting, I said it. So can we make sure that that is something that is clearly just communicated with parents?
I mean, every, I mean, I can only speak from my experience as a principal. Every time. I was in a meeting where I had a student that would qualify for specialized transportation. The the yes box is always checked on that part of the I E P. But then there's a conversation about, you know, you don't have to do this. You can get mileage reimbursement instead if you choose to drive your your child to to school. Which I I I don't believe as a principal I ever had any family do that. I I think I had one. Family member, one year do that. The bulk of them use the specialized transportation. But that's only my experience as a principal.
Are they, are they able to even have it, but then not use it? If they, you know, they could say, if they're entitled to it, so we have Vanpool. I drive my kid to school Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Yeah.
And mostly Tuesdays and Thursdays, but sometimes I don't. Are there ever scenarios where there's our van pools where kids have it available, but they're not on them?
Well, I mean, we have ten in district vans right now that transport multiple students. So I mean, even if you had a couple of kids that, you know. Either didn't use it or didn't use it every day. I I don't know if you're gonna be able to consolidate routes.
Uh, no, not day to day.
You know, and then there's, there's the out of district students that get transported that way. I mean. Cause there could be.
I'm just saying, I know anecdotally, there, I don't know how clear we make that to parents, that that's a choice and not a requirement, that they, you know, I just. Would like to hear that we're revisiting those conversations.
Or what they're able to say is.
Not everybody has a great experience with Vanpool. Vanpool's not great either, so.
But it's not just about p- parents driving them, it's about.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, do parents realize there's perhaps another option? The mileage reimbursement, for example, or if they already qualify for the regular bus. Which a lot of people do that didn't used to down in the center of town.
I'm curious, I don't, this might be um a really ignorant question, but in terms of our our regular bus contracts, the Vanpool. Do we have re- regular buses that um uh are fitted for various, so, if that's not an option through. Okay, is that, it's obviously not part of that, the discussion here for this budget season, but is that something that? In theory could happen, right, that we could have buses rather than Vanpool options that have.
Dorm would have to.
Yeah.
Durham would have to be, yeah, or whatever.
It's gonna get passed right along, does.
Right.
Um, cause it's not a market that I really think they dabble in. I I mean, there there's not a lot of. Providers and Vanpool has a veritable monopoly over.
I see. Okay.
You know, they they, um, Vanpool bought other smaller vendors.
So Vanpool is what we use because we don't have any other choices.
And homeless and foster.
And Durham's the only one who ever even bids out for a bus contract.
I mean, the next time Van- the Vanpool contracts up, I can go out, I can bid that, but.
Right, but would there be anyone who can, yeah?
Uh, might very well.
All over the state.
Yeah. And it's just their costs, they just keep driving costs up and.
This is capitalism, baby.
They're not cheap.
Ouch.
For sure.
That's rough.
I guess we get it, yeah, we will, and we'll, I'm anxious to get to it. We don't have time now, but we will.
Thank you for those.
To the public, later in this spring, we were doing a deep, deep, I've tearing the whole transportation situation apart and building it back up from, so we all understand.
You all think.
Yeah. Okay. Cause if we do six of those little things, those dollars will add up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we're not, I mean, this is the wrong word, but we're kind of, our hands are tied.
Mm-hmm.
Well, in a lot of ways they are. Uh, there is a lack of competition.
Yeah.
And we also do not have the infrastructure capacity or money to have our own in-house.
Not, yeah.
There's no way. I I will be retired by the time that happens in this city.
Don't threaten me with a good time, Nick Burner. I'm looking forward to East Hampton Eagles fleet.
Oh, oh.
There's, I I just.
No, yeah, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not nothing, yeah. Okay.
Um, anyway, uh, shall I move on to the kind of those?
So it's like two point seven million versus, in the district one was five point three.
Yep.
Okay, just getting an overall sense of things, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can see these two cost centers are our drivers.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, summary breakdown, this looks very similar to what you talked two weeks ago. Uh, the number just changed a little bit. Uh, it went down from eleven point eight three to eleven point seven seven. Look at that.
Well done.
Yeah, uh, and it was just a slight personnel cost decrease. Yeah, it wasn't much of anything. Um, the reason for the significant increases don't change. I think it's just important for people to see it several times. Um, on the second page, if you break it down by location and expense type, you'll see. The schools are very similar in terms of what their increases are. Um, the Mountain View expenses you'll see is high and that's all the software that S R funded that.
Mm-hmm.
Needs to go back into their budget, the screener that I talked about, some of the. The um digital curricula that are are used that, you know, it was funded with S R, but needs to continue. Um, special ed, you see the, you know, the thirty percent increase and it's all fixed costs. I mean, the personnel increase isn't really disproportionate to the rest of. Uh, of the um, the the district's budget. Um, and then for the district, you'll see the personnel increase is disproportionately high due to the. You know, the the step raises and what that being in that online. Um, so overall, that's where we are now. Um, I think it's important one more time for folks to uh see this, you know, by cost type. Um, you know, the fact that so much of this is is not in our control. I mean, personnel's personnel are. Um, if we want to keep all of our um S R funded people, which we have campaigned for.
Yeah.
The fact that the needs are are certainly still there. Um, that makes up almost seventy three percent of our total budget. But of of the remaining, um, you know, twenty seven percent. Twenty two point three six percent of that's fixed costs that we really can't control. Um, variable costs are just under five percent.
Can we, um, at some point before we send this up to the full council, just get a breakdown of what our um class sizes are? Particularly at Mountain View. I mean, at East Hampton High, they're capped at a certain, like, kids will sign up and there's a cap on the sign up, so I'm less concerned about that, but. Just more concerned with the uh, the the K through eight. It's just, it it'll be a useful thing if we get any pushback from the city. It'll be a useful thing to see where we're standing currently.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I buy, I did, I gave you the enrollment projection.
Right.
I guess it would be.
Did that include individual class size on it?
I just remember a couple of years ago, Megan in particular, I wasn't on the committee then, but Megan in particular led. A real deep dive into looking at class sizes by grade, because I think the focus at that point, there were certain grade levels that they were particularly concerned about keeping those. Ratios down.
Yes, I think we need to know the number of teachers.
Yeah, like I see enrollment, I just can't see class size.
Can I just see that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's just aggregate.
Right.
Um, I I do have a a page that'll end up in the budget book that. Uh, and it's, we we kind of, basically what we do is we base it on our October one enrollment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is itemized by like actual teacher name and everything like that. When I do the projection, which is what you're looking at next year, I remove all of that. I take all the teacher names out of it. Um, and I actually take the enrollment as of when I made that page for you, what it was, because it's different than the October enrollment. Um, so in the budget book, you'll see the October enrollment broken down by teacher, like, so you'll see. What the class sizes were as of October.
That's what I'd like to see. I just think it's good information. In the event that somebody, if I'm looking at where somebody could push back on me about. Personnel is a big suck for money, so I just, I wanna know where we currently stand with those classes.
Yeah. That's, yeah.
But aside from that, I feel really.
Yeah.
Like I understand this picture.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then I I just put a little kind of asterisk thing on the bottom here that says this, you know, it's important for the public and and. City and everybody to realize, um, that this reflects a level service budget where we can continue our work and implementing M T S S. As Julian spoke to you about last week during the committee meeting. Um, you you know, if we want to continue our journey with implementing M T S S and we wanna provide the services that we are for our students now. Um, you know, going forward, that this is what we're going to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, are there any other questions?
I'm good. Anybody else? I asked so many questions while we were going that, I think I got, yeah.
Well, I hope I was able to answer them.
You did, yes, this is, um. Really well, oh, white, thank you.
Welcome.
It means we'll be uh available within minutes.
So I guess the plan going forward is uh super, Benita and I are meeting with. The mayor Thursday at eleven thirty in the morning to have our budget discussion.
Okay.
Um, you know, I'm certain we'll get some feedbacks and suggestions, I, you know. Um, which, you know, I I obviously take into account, I, there'll maybe some edits that occur between um that meeting and this. Um, uh, Tuesday, I will see this committee next, right?
Okay, so you're meeting on the twenty ninth and then we'll see each other on.
Tomorrow.
You're right.
We'll see each other on the fifth.
But for this discussion, okay, so you'll be able to see. What feedback you're initially getting. We'll meet on Tuesday the fifth. And so it looks at this point, we have a hold in for the following Tuesday, but it's looking like, I guess you won't know till Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, we'll see what happens there and then, you know, what edits are are made and.
Yeah.
How um you feel about um, if any, and and um, go from there.
Okay, so just to be clear, we have a meeting, March, Tuesday, March fifth at four thirty P M. And we are holding a slot for March twelfth at four thirty P M. Um, but that, we will only use that if we need to and we will update. At the next meeting.
And the twelfth would be a hard out for five forty five, because we have a regular.
That's right.
Meeting.
That's right.
And then goes into.
Hard out at hundred thirty, so Mr. Bernie, I can eat dinner.
There you go.
And I believe our March fifth meeting, it's also hybrid, but I do think it is in um the basement conference room.
Oh, it is.
March five.
Um, let me just confirm that before I.
Cause you know, obviously.
I mean. It's, I have to navigate my. Three five, just confirm. Conference room B, it is in the basement.
Oh, it is, so it's right here.
Right below us.
Below us.
Oh, was it on?
There's another one.
You've never been down?
Yes.
Oh, you should go see.
One more down. But that will not, I mean, it'll be hybrid for the folks who are watching uh now or who are um.
I think the basement one though is in the middle.
Yeah.
Because below us is the assessor's office.
Yeah. Yep. We are meeting in the basement.
It's in the middle of the the floor, if that makes sense.
But that's how we got our four thirty time.
Yeah, 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 cause there was a meeting.
Yeah.
And this is.
Well, I appreciate this level of detail. I think it's helpful to see it broken down in so many different ways. And I also, I know we've talked about this a few times, but there, you know, there's things we can't control about the cost this year and there's also. Um, really unique things about this year coming off of the S R funding that won't be repeated next year. So, you know, it it seems bleak to say we need eleven point seven seven percent, but it won't always be that way. This is a unique year.
Great point.
There's a lot of things happening at one.
Yeah, yeah. And their inflation is ridiculous.
That one.
Yeah. Yes. So it is not.
This is not a trend.
Yes.
It's not the year to expand, but it's just the year.
Yeah, the last thing we we can do is slide backwards at all and we have a budget that doesn't do that. And that's huge in this year.
With S R. Expanding in clever ways like you.
Exactly.
Been with.
Yeah.
Languages and looking for ways.
The coding, I pumped up the coding one.
Start laying the groundwork for.
Yeah, yeah, think of it like pilot programming and.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I know if folks listen to this later or if the folks who are listening right now. Um, that sort of creative growth ideas of, you know, using um resources we have in the city and high schoolers and all that kind of stuff. Like, we wanna keep hearing those ideas, uh, because so far, um, our superintendent has made a couple of things already happen. And we're just a couple of months in this, this season. So as you think of things, you may wanna hear them. So as you think of things, we wanna hear them. I'm looking at that late bus.
Stay tuned for those work sessions this spring.
Yes.
Never getting rid of us there.
Um, there is a spot on the budget, I mean, but. Brain not working. There is a spot on our agenda for other businesses. Does anyone have anything else they wanna talk about? No, can't believe that. Uh, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second that emotion.
And I believe we can just all, do we need to roll? Well, for safety, we'll roll call out.
Sure.
You don't need to?
We have to do it. Why not?
Okay. Yeah, cause it takes a long time. We could be done by now though, by the way.
Um, all right, so we roll call out with Laura Scott.
Uh, good night.
Erica Ed.
Thank you. Good night.
And cheer Megan Harvey. Good night.